I'd like to call the order, the Monday, January 6th meeting of the Monona City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Core.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Groupie.
Here.
Alder Moore.
Here.
Alder Kitzler.
Here.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16th meeting?
Move approval.
Second. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Under appearances, we just have one item. I have a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which I'm going to read. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and became the chief organizer of the civil rights movement by leading peaceful, nonviolent protests throughout the American South. And whereas in 1963, during the March on Washington, 250,000 people gathered outside the Lincoln Memorial to hear Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" address. And whereas, due in large part to Dr. King's efforts, the Civil Rights Act, which prohibits racial discrimination and segregation in employment, education, and public facilities, was adopted in 1964, Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize later that year. Whereas, Dr. King was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee, on April 4th, 1968. And whereas, on November 2nd, 1983, President Ronald Reagan signed legislation making the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. a legal public holiday to be observed on the third Monday of every January. And whereas, President Bill Clinton signed the King Holiday and Service Act on August 23rd, 1994, which designated the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday as a day of community service, interracial cooperation, and youth anti-violence initiatives. And now, therefore, I, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor of Monona, Wisconsin, in collaboration with the Monona City Council, do hereby acknowledge Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 20th, 2020, and encourage the residents of the City of Monona to participate in the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service by donating their time to make a difference on this day. Signed in the City of Monona, Dane County, Wisconsin, the 6th day of January 2020, Mary Kay O'Connor, Mayor. Brian, I'll put that to you. We have no public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Under council action items, under unfinished business, 1A, consideration of Resolution 19-12-2387, authorization to proceed with a water rate increase put forth by the Public Works Committee. And I think Mark and Dan are going to address this, I think.
I didn't give this last time, so I can pass this out.
Thank you.
The reason why we're -- the main reason why we're asking for a water rate increase, water rate increases, is there's a requirement, we borrow debt for water utilities. You have to -- your debt coverage has to be 1.25, the highest annuals debt service to your net revenues. And these are 2019, we were 1.55, 2020, 1.38. And the projections from '21 to '24 includes what we would do, increase, what would be added in for debt service with the current borrowing that we'd be doing in 2020. So you can see it goes below in 2021, and below to 1.1, which would be, we would not be in compliance with our debt coverage, which is part of our bond requirements. So that's kind of the main reason, is kind of want to show that. You know, we borrowed in 2019 and 2020, projected to borrow $2 million. Total debt outstanding before that is $5.6 million, as you can see, so we're borrowing in the last two years, almost, you know, a third of that. And also with this, we're looking for the Public Works Committee, who was talking about going from cubic units to gallons, and from quarterly billing to monthly billings. Just one thing I want to add in here, there is a natural rate increase in public works right now. I don't know if you know how public fire protection works. So public fire protection is, you know, to charge you in there for the infrastructure, it's not for the fire department, it's always, everybody gets confused, they say for funding the fire department, which is not true, it's for all the infrastructure, all the hydrants, all the stuff under the ground that goes for public fire protection, that feeds through the hydrants and all kinds of other infrastructure. That's what it's paying for. The way the structure has been set up there, it's a basically like a mill rate, it's how much per thousand, it's based on your land improvements. So each year, land improvements are going up in assessed values, so that's kind of your natural rate increase, we're receiving every year in the water utility. So that's been helped offsetting some of the issues we have in there, because one of the big issues we have right now in utilities, it's not a big issue, is, I should say it's a big issue, but our usage is actually either flat or been going down the previous years. So you've got your costs going up, you have debt going up, but your usage is staying the same. And with that natural rate increase, it's been kind of saving from going to some larger increases with the public fire being the way it was set up. Now, I believe that was initiated about seven years ago, Public Works changed that in the rate case. So with that, and then, I know we talked about the monthly billing last time, I know there was a question about how much it would cost. So I did kind of sat down with our billing clerk and kind of figured out what additionals would it be. The two biggest thing would be the postage and additional postcards. With that, though, the savings, the big savings that we didn't really talk about is the I and I, too. One of the issues we run into with the quarterly billing is, you somebody, we just had the situation where somebody got a, basically had a leak, like three days after they read the meter. They didn't know about it until, because we can do a profile when that actually kind of happens, they didn't know about it until three months later. So, you know, they have a water, the sewers, something's running, you know, so when it 's up happening, they get a large bill, a lot of times, you know, part of the ordinance, you have to write some of that sewer stuff off. So we lose the revenue for the sewer, and we got to pay Mass Metro for that, you know, running that leak. So, you know, moving up the monthly billing would save, I think, a lot of that stuff, it'd probably save a lot of the I and I issues we run into with these leaks and other stuff, so we could, so there's a little bit of savings, I didn't, couldn't quantify that number, but we believe there is some savings with that Mass Metro, where we're not going to be pumping as much, so there's savings there. But between the postcards and the postage, we kind of estimated, just kind of did some numbers based on we mail out per month, about $10,000 increase overall. And since it's the water utility, it's on the card, sewer utility's on the card, and stormwater's on the card, it is split three ways, so each utility pays for another portion of the, that increase. So the extra postage and extra postcards will be paid by, in thirds, between all three utilities.
Does, Michelle is going to be working some extra hours, right? Does that include her additional hours?
It's right in the 2020 budget, does not include any extra hours.
Any other questions? Alder Kitzler?
I know one thing that was brought up last time was savings of the postage and postcard if people pay online, they can sign up for billing, or payless billing essentially. Were you able to quantify, so right now, we charge, if you want to pay, any city bill by credit card.
Yeah.
Were you able to quantify how much it would cost the city if we were to get rid of those fees?
We kind of looked at that. We talked to some other communities, most of the communities right now, they are charging for, if you use a credit card, most, pretty much all the communities we talked to are charging a credit card fee, what we charge. Biggest difference is, a lot of the communities are not charging if you use your check, it comes directly out of your bank account, which we do right now. With that savings, you know.
An electronic check, you mean?
Yeah, like an electronic check, yep. A lot of, what that is, is basically, I talked to PSN, who was our provider, it's basically 50 cents a check, the city would be charged for that, so we, you know, we'd probably get more people signing up, and we'd have a little, and I think it, it's probably not going to be a wash, it's pretty close to being a wash when it comes to that. The biggest thing, we still can't get rid, I mean, most communities aren't getting rid of the 2.75 of the interest rate, or the fees for the credit cards.
And is that 2.5, is that just, is that the bare minimum to cover whatever the city pays for the credit card company?
We don't get charged that, so the credit card company takes that money. So, if somebody pays online, that goes directly to the third-party vendor.
So it's the vendor that gets the money?
Yeah.
Not the city?
Yeah. We'd be charged, if we, say we, say if we go and we would take, eat that cost, we would get, get that cost.
Just for what it's worth, I think we need to look into an option to get rid of the credit card, because I know, at least the number of the people that I talked to about this, one, they're very in favor of the monthly payments, but two, they're hesitant to give their debit or credit, or their check information, because if that were to be hacked, there goes your whole account, that's unaccountable. Whereas a credit card, you can dispute the cost, or payment, or whatever.
Sure.
What have you, or the bill. So I mean, again, for what it's worth, and I don't know at what point you figure this out, but I think we need to look at, and I would say, venture to save for all city things, to make it easier to pay, to go paperless. I mean, you could classify it as a sustainability issue, but we need to get rid of those fees, because, I mean, companies do, so.
Of course, companies can just charge more to cover that, too.
Yeah. I know the Parks Department, they, they actually, they absorb the cost of the credit cards, but they work it into their rate structure. We're not allowed to, you know, do that into the rate structure right now, we haven't done that into the rate structure.
Is that because of having to go through the?
Third-party.
But the PSC to set our rates, we can't allow?
Yeah, so we had to put that in.
Charging extra for that?
Yeah.
Sorry, just clarification on that real quick, sorry. We are not legally allowed to add that into our pay structure, or we haven't asked PSC?
We haven't asked PSC to do it, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, so it's not legally in there, because we haven't asked them to put that as part of the cost.
But we could ask them to.
Yeah, do you know if they've ever allowed that?
I don't know if I could ask around.
Yeah.
Like I said, I know ones that do the, directly from the checking account, and not for the credit cards, I don't know. I mean, we can look into that, if that's something we want to do.
Alder Thomas, did you have a question?
Yeah, so, but if it's 50 cents, if they pay by check, we haven't sent it out to them, so we save the money in postage, so it's pretty much a wash?
Correct.
So we wouldn't be charging?
If they sign up online, they still, they can still pay online and still request, if you go now, if you go on, you can request, if you want a bill, a hard copy still, or if you want it by electronic. So it depends how they still want to set that up. Some people just still like the hard copy, you're not, never going to stop doing it, they'll pay online. We have some people like that right now, who signed up, they pay online, but they still want that hard copy, don't want the electronic version.
Alder Moore?
So, just to go back to your example of someone who might have a leak and might not discover that leak for three months until they get their bill, isn't that one of the reasons why we're installing the smart meters, is to be able to tell that right away, so that with that occurrence wouldn't really be an occurrence anymore once the smart meters are in?
Correct. I mean, that's the goal, they have that in there, we can do that, too.
Okay. Anyone else? Alder Wood?
Well, first, I would support, I think Alder Kitzler's suggestion that we ask PSC if we can.
Sure.
Include the credit card fees. Let's see what they say. But I wanted to go back to one of the initial things you talked about with the, basically the promise that we made, well, with regard to the issuance of revenue bonds, we have to, operating revenues have to exceed debt service by 1.25x. Is that something we've already promised to current bondholders?
That's just, that's just typical throughout the state, that's how they write those.
Right, so.
It is in, currently, it's in all our bonds that we have, and for revenue bonds, it currently is at 1.25.
So we need to.
So we have to, I mean, to be in compliance, whether you have to get to 1.25.
Right, so that, which could have, I'd assume, a lot of really bad consequences if we put on that.
Right, yes.
So if we didn't get the rate increase in 2021, we would fall short of that. Would that mean we would, at that point, our only option, I assume, would be not to borrow for a year?
Correct.
To keep it above the.
That'd be another one way to look at it, yeah. I mean, I'm sure we'd, you know, it would ruin our credit rating, things like that, so there's other consequences to it, you know, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next under new business, and this is start for immediate approval, immediate action, consideration of Resolution 20-1-2389, approving the purchase of Azol X Series Manual Defibrillator, put forth by the fire chief. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to suspend Wilson, take this item out of order.
I think Scott just stepped outside. All in favor of taking it out of order, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval.
Second.
If he doesn't come back in, Brian, you can probably address this, can't you? Okay.
So, tonight here, quest to purchase a new defibrillator, 12-lead EKG, it's a heart monitor. We're upgrading the current one that we have. The current one that we have will go to the backup ambulance, the one that's in the backup ambulance, we're now going to source to our first-out engine, so that we have a, have capabilities to do 12-lead EKGs on both ambulances and the, and the engine. So, looking at updating it to the new version, as with any computer equipment, pretty much as soon as you purchase it, it's obsolete. So we're just trying to make sure that we've got the most up-to-date equipment and software within that equipment for the patients that we transport. The equipment, this piece of equipment's used pretty much on every patient that's transported to the hospital. We're able to do blood pressures, pulse, their pulse oximetry, which tells us how much oxygen is in the blood, we do four-lead EKGs, 12-lead EKGs, we transmit the EKGs directly to the hospital, to the ER, and with the interpretation from our paramedics, and the interpretation with the ER doctors, they're able to skip the emergency room and go right up to the cardiac cath lab if that's needed. So, any questions?
Hold up, Groupie?
A general question, if I'm reading the total correctly, it's slightly under the 35,000 that was budgeted, what happens to the additional funds that are kind of left over?
You would sit in that line item until the end of the year, and then get rolled over to undesigned.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
You talked about finance, what's, what you're going to do with the 2017 unit and then downstream, and that, what we're going to do with the ones we have.
Yep. So the current one will go to the backup ambulance, and then the one that's in the backup ambulance currently will go into the engine, so that, now that we've, we'll have three people on the engine, pretty much, or three people on the crew, every day we'll have a paramedic on the engine every day, they can start doing 12 leads prior to another ambulance, if we have a second call. If they get on location earlier than the ambulance, say the ambulance is coming back from the hospital, they're able to start putting on the 12 lead and doing, getting interpretations right directly. So, this is, this is also a defibrillator, so we're able to shock people if they are having cardiac arrest.
And this was approved as part of the capital budget request, so. Any other questions? Andrew?
Are all the individuals trained on using this machine?
All, the paramedics are correct. We have all of our career personnel, and then some of the, some of the.
Some of the volunteers.
Volunteers, yep, are also.
Because I know sometimes they man the engine, so it's just.
Yep. So, yeah, so, all of the paramedics are trained in the use of this.
Anyone else? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Kitzler.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Core.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Alder Groupie.
Aye.
Alder Moore.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Chief Sullivan, congratulations on your pending retirement.
Okay, I was going to do that at the end.
You're going to come back up and?
Yep, I'll hang around till the end.
Okay, all right. Sorry to steal your thunder.
Spoiler alert.
Dan? The next item up is presentation update and possible discussion on the 2020 Pirate Island Bridge Replacement Project. And I think MSA, the engineers are here to discuss the project and fill us in on what's going to be happening there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. In the 2019 capital budget, we had funding set aside to begin design of the Pirate Island Bridge Replacement Project. The 2020 capital budget, we have funding to complete the project. We have our project engineers here tonight from MSA, Greg Baruchy and Leah Rhodes, to go over a project summary for you folks, basically, give you a brief summary of project design to date, and, and where we're at right now, moving forward with the bridge replacement. So, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Can you pack, and I created a project summary, and I won't go through the description of work, but that's basically a lot of the bid items that we have out for bid. The bridge replacement project, the existing structure is structurally deficient, it's a rating of eight, and by, is it national standards? They need to be 50, so, you're way under that, so it's time for a new structure. We had some constraints with it, there's a 50-foot right-of-way out there, rather than a 66-foot right-of-way. Existing road is not like a consistent width and straight. We have sanitary sewer on the east side, and the water main was suspended from the existing girders, and we've got private parking on the southeast quadrant, and then we have some mountable curb, so it's sort of a tight constraint project. Proposed improvements include, include a new girder structure, that would build half at a time, so that'll allow access in and out while construction crews are working on half, and then flip-flop that. The low chord elevation, which is the bottom of the structure, is still the same, there were, in the public meetings that we had, there was concerns that we were going to drop that down, so we elevated it, so it's the same existing elevation. And the bridge railing will be the same as the bridge road railing, so it'll be consistent when railing to railing. It's an asphalt project, where they said some mountable curbs, some regular curb. The water main is underground in a casing pipe, so we put it in the casing pipe, in case you guys want to do any dredging out there, that'll protect the actual water main itself, and if there is ever an issue, you can dig down on both sides and pull that pipe in and out, it's a restrained pipe. There's no sanitary sewer, storm sewer replacement, and all the work is proposed to be within the existing right-of-way, and we have to tie into a couple of retaining walls, one on the southeast quadrant and one on the northwest quadrant.
Okay, sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Under the new girder structure, it says no raised sidewalk, is that because of the right-of-way? I'm just thinking, with a narrow road and the lighting back there is.
There's, there's actually room for a sidewalk, but it's not an actual dedicated sidewalk, so the way the girders are spaced, we have to basically, if you want to explain that a little better, but you only get so much width to play with.
You can only cut out so much at a time and still have enough width to keep traffic on. So the first act that we build is going to be both wider than it needs to be at the end of the day. So the finish brick is going to be wider than it needs to be first year. So if we were to, there's the availability to add a sidewalk later, or just to strike it for pedestrians, but they will have extra.
Okay, that, that's just the key, I was just thinking, because it's generally a narrow bridge, and if at nighttime, somebody wanted to walk across it and there's traffic or whatever.
I think it's actually five feet wider to the west.
Okay, all right.
And the existing on the east will be about the same.
Thanks.
Meetings and approvals, we had a Public Works meeting in June, a public involvement meeting in August, permits, we have all the permits, I called Dane County today and had a discussion with them, so we're all good to go, permit-wise. And then moving forward, we're currently out to bids right now, we put it out last Monday, I believe, and we have 10, already 10 prime bidders, so, pretty good. Not all of those are bridge builders, some of those are earthwork roadway, but I think there's seven or eight bridge builders on that, so. Bid opening date is February 20th, and we're going to do that online. Review the bids in March, get the contracts ready in April, provided there's an acceptable bid, and have a pre-construction meeting May, and construction will start June 15th. June 15th was a date that we needed for the DNR. So, pushing that back for completion, substantial completion will be August, or October 30th, final completion November 13th. And then, item G explains the reimbursement, so this is 50% reimbursement for the bridge, not the water mains, a bridge and roadway through Dane County. And then, reimbursement would be most likely in January 2021. So, why we didn't get in this cycle is, we would be guessing at numbers, now, by the time we apply, we actually have bid items, so we'd be a lot closer, we don't want to apply and then have to pull the permit and then reapply again, so. And then there's a couple of plan sheets in the, in the packet, it's not all of them, I think there's, I don't know, probably 40 different plan sheets, so, it's just a quick snapshot of what we've got for bridge and roadway and water main and stuff like that. So, if you have anything else.
Questions? Alder Moore, then Alder Kitzler, and then Alder Groupie.
You mentioned that there was a concern about it being lower, and so you raised it, I'm wondering if there was discussion of whether or not it should be higher, simply because of the volume of water that we seem to be experiencing on a more regular, is there, was there any discussion of actually increasing this?
Well, we did hydraulic study of that.
Okay.
We could go lower, but the reason we kept it at the same elevation was because of boat traffic. If we keep going higher and higher, then we start impacting the outsides and the side slopes.
Okay.
And all the residents out there.
Okay.
So it adversely affects it, but I think it's only like five inches or six inches that the centerline is raised, so.
Okay.
It's not a huge amount, but we didn't want to have somebody say, well, why did you lower this, now I can't get my boat through, it's the same elevation.
Well, I guess that's part of why I'm asking, if there was any discussion of even going higher than that, given that people do have to get their boat through, and we've had historically high waters for.
If we, if we do go higher.
Mm-hmm.
If you can see in the profile, we really, we had a hard time getting that K-value.
Got it.
K-value is your, your profile for your design speed.
Mm-hmm.
So since the project is only 200 feet, we got to get up and down and over the top of this, and if you start putting the pinnacle in this, you can't see what's coming on the other side.
We did get some feedback, too, that when the water gets high enough, where you can't go under, you can go around, because there's some sort of sandbar issue on our hull height, but when the water is at that level, you can't get under it.
Okay. Great.
And just, is, one other small thing, can you explain, for the public's purposes primarily, why a permit would be required from the historical society?
Because in the, in this area, there are archaeological findings, so the archaeological and historical are together as one, so the permit actually comes, or the approval comes from the historical society, although it's technically more for an archaeological burial. And there were some in the area, but we weren't really disturbing anything that hadn't been already disturbed, so they said they didn't need anybody out on site, otherwise, had there been archaeological findings, then they'd require somebody to be on site when the excavation took place.
Alder Kitzler?
This might be more a Dan question, but I know we're applying for some of the funds through the state, is this project applicable for that? And is that something we would work with you guys on, or is that separate and aside?
This project, we are only going with the Dane County Bridge Grant reimbursement. I think we would probably cancel ourselves out if we apply for more grants.
Okay.
I think we're going to get our best bang for the buck by going with the Dane County grant.
Okay, thanks.
I had a follow-up on that, the grant.
Is that a competitive grant with Dane County? Or is it pretty much if you apply, you'll get the reimbursement?
From what I understand, it's pretty much if you apply, you get the reimbursement. We are the only city that's part of the Dane County Grant reimbursement program. And we do not have a, a history of applying for these grants. We've received one to date. We're about ready to submit our second reimbursement for the Bridge Road project, and this one will be our third one.
Okay.
So I would say 99% sure that we're probably going to get this grant.
Okay, thanks.
Alder Groupie?
So this, if I'm not mistaken, is the only access point to Pirate Island, correct? And that being said, will there be any impact on emergency vehicles being able to make it? I mean, if there, is there going to be any issue of narrowing it enough, you know, too much while construction is undergoing, that emergency vehicles would be prohibited from?
So during construction, there will be only one lane, so vehicles will have to stop and wait to get past, but there will always be enough for emergency vehicles.
Okay. And then I think it introduces a second point, which I think we've discussed, I kind of, in a more abstract way in the past, but are there any potential future plans to add another access point to Pirate Island in the future that public works has on the radar or?
We did look at that initially as part of this project, but I believe it was determined the elevation didn't match up with going south rate to Broadway. I believe the, the slope would have been too great.
Okay.
If you want to explain a different-
Yeah, the, like I said, as you go over the pinnacle of the road and you come down to the existing driveways, and then you try and get up to Broadway, that steep slope would just not, would be good for stopping and stuff like that. It's not to say that at some point in time, if all that development goes, you know, if it's not residential, it goes to a different development, that you couldn't do that. You could raise that up and potentially do that. But to try and get a second access in, well, we were trying to look at it to say, okay, if we put a temporary structure in, then we could build this all in one shot, and then we could speed this whole process up, and it just didn't work out that way.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm assuming in terms of getting across the bridge, we're just relying on people to take turns going back and forth?
Yeah.
Because it will be both directions, correct?
Right. It's pretty much just limited to the folks that live down there. So I think we're, we're basically relying on, on them to kind of figure it out. But they, they should be able to see if there's traffic approaching from the other side. They'll just have to cooperate with each other.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is reports of committees, Alders, et cetera. I guess we will start with Alder Thomas.
I have no report.
Alder Corb?
Land and Library tickets are still on sale. The event is January 25th, adults only. And if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, I encourage you to do so. It's going to be a fun event. We're celebrating all things Wisconsin, so cheese, beer, books, uh, Brooks, Bucks, Badgers, Packers. So yeah, it should be fun. And then Landmarks Commission meets Wednesday at 4:30. We are not discussing the San Domiano property. That is tabled till February.
Alder Wood?
Well, we have a special CDA meeting tomorrow night, and MPO meets on Wednesday night.
Alder Kitzler?
Nothing really, except for if you haven't visited the River Ring. Every time I've been there, it has been pretty busy. I've skated a few times too, and actually I saw in an email that Parks and Rec has a special deal where you can get your pool pass and unlimited River Ring pass for the same or some discounted price. So you should check that out, and it goes for the full year for both passes, so. It worked out pretty well. So anyways, otherwise, no report.
Alder Groupie?
Transit Committee meets this Wednesday at 6:30.
And Alder Moore?
Nothing, no report.
Okay, staff. Scott?
Couple of things I wanted to go over. First off, retired firefighter EMT Mike Jossen. He was a 30-plus year employee of Manona, passed away on Saturday after a battle with cancer. So will be, there'll be information coming forth on funeral arrangements, and I'm sure we'll, we'll have a presence at the, at the funeral. So just wanted to let everybody know that. From standpoint of year, over the year, EMS was up 8% for calls, which correlates to 106 calls. Fire was up 19.5%, which correlates to 95 increased calls. We did have one of our full-time firefighter paramedics resign, Alex Bodine. He was a intern with us, then hired full-time, intern, and then volunteer, and hired full-time. He moved to Provo, Utah, so we're doing a background check right now on the final candidate that was on our hiring list. So currently, we're down one person. And then we do have one of our other firefighter paramedics that is going on extended leave for surgery, non-job related. So we'll be down two people until we get firefighter Rosnick back from his surgery, so. Other than that, we're doing interviews for LTEs to cover positions. We've got four LTEs that we'll be interviewing next week to bring them on. We already, we currently have three, which is an increase of two. The, two of the three are former employees that have gone to other departments, but want to come back and help us out and work as an LTE with our department, which is good. And other than that, I want to formally put out that I've decided to retire. I'll be retiring March 31st of this year. I've got 32, over 32 years of fire, in the fire service of that 31 full-time. So it's about time for me to move on, start the new chapter in my life. I thank you for, you know, the opportunity that you've given me. We've, we've had a great, great 10 years and done a lot of great work. I can't say enough that it's, it's been a group effort, both with the fire department and with the council, to move the department to the paramedic level to increase staffing. So it's, you know, I go back to, it's, it's been, always been a group effort. It's always been, we've done this. So I thank you for letting me have the opportunity to lead this great department, great personnel within the department, and I look forward to seeing where and who will lead this department in the next step. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Scott, and thank you for your service in the city of Manona. I'm sure we'll have other opportunities to-
Yep, so.
Thank you as well.
We've got three months yet, so.
Thank you.
We'll have to give enough time, so.
Thanks, Scott.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Joan?
Four candidates have turned in their nomination papers, so we do have a little bit of a contest on the April ballot. Otherwise, we're gearing up with some badge book training, so that will be all set when the elections happen next year, starting with the partisan primary, I'm sorry, not partisan, excuse me, spring primary on February 18th.
And Joan, just correct me if I'm wrong, but the people can still turn in their papers through tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, tomorrow's the deadline, so there are, the, there's still time till 5 o'clock tomorrow. Also want to remind everybody, if you haven't registered, please do now. Do it ahead of time rather than waiting for coming to the polling place. If you've changed your address, even within Manona, you do need to reregister. If you've changed your name, you do need to register. And that way, check yourself out on My Vote Wisconsin, make sure that your record's up to date. I know there's been a lot of comment about people being purged from the voter rolls inaccurately. And that did happen somewhat in 2017, probably same day voter registration. There wasn't a voter turned away in Manona for sure. And, you know, so we have your records. Call us, we'll look it up for you. Make sure you're ready to go, but it shouldn't be an issue for anyone in Manona. But, you know, we're, we're all here to help you make sure you're ready to go.
City Administrator Gatto?
Just one thing, I mentioned at the end of last year that with 2020 coming on, we'd be rolling out with the US Census Bureau, the 2020 census. So we have a couple of staff members that will be attending some training later this week to get some more information on how we can kind of get the word out about the census and its importance locally here in Manona and across the region. So we'll have more communication about that process as we roll into 2020.
Okay. I just had two things. Keep in mind that our next meeting will actually be on the 21st, which is a Tuesday, due to the Martin Luther King holiday being on Monday, the 20th. And I think this week is the one-year anniversary of Administrator Gatto's employment with the city of Manona. So, Brian, you've done a great job so far, and we've had a very interesting first year.
Yes, we have.
So, looking forward to the next one.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We do have one appointment, Jeanne Verche to election inspector effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.